Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, opposed, none, and then we're to general business.
All right, jumping in, we're going fast because it's eight fifteen, eight eighteen.
Yeah.
The first thing I wanted to talk about tonight was the visioning document.
Mm-hmm.
This visioning document was kind of used to help build out our budget before you guys. Just some kind of highlights for twenty twenty five. Uh, long-term financial plan is in there. Um, that has been on ours for a few years and admittedly that has been one project that has been pushed back a little bit. Um, as you guys know, we currently have an RFQ out for financial consultants. And um, one of my goals for twenty twenty five would be to whoever we end up choosing, whether it's Baker Tilly or another firm, um, that we get their direct assistance in putting that together because I know most of them have done them and or helped with them. So, uh, that would be, that's in twenty twenty five. Uh, another highlight, uh, sidewalk expansion and maintenance. Um, that, uh, we, the city was awarded a grant to pay for the construction of a sidewalk along Twelfth Avenue Southeast near Settlers Park to kind of finish off connecting that neighborhood. This will basically be the last addition to get that neighborhood fully connected out with sidewalks. And the city, uh, previously allocated forty-three thousand dollars of ARPA funding as the city match for putting the plans together for that. So that's in there. Also in there for twenty-five, um, both orderly annexation and zoning ordinance updates, um, kind of piggybacking off the comp plan. Um, we did have strategic plan and a compensation study in there. Strategic, strategic plan being more for the council as a business practice and the compensation study, um, uh, kind of piggybacking off of the five-year idea that, uh, the compensation study would be done probably starting in the summer of twenty-five. Said it would then be implemented, uh, in twenty twenty-six. Certainly not everything in the twenty twenty-five, but that's kind of high notes. Couple things such as, uh, city hall, city hall hours review, we have discussed recently. Um, but is getting moved to twenty-five because, um, if we do anything, I foresee it potentially being implemented during next summer. But that would be, um, for further discussions we have as a council. And then, uh, just kind of going forward, there were a few things that got moved that were in twenty-five that got pushed back, um, for various reasons, including, uh, resurfacing Tenth Avenue Southeast that I think got pushed back to twenty twenty-seven. Um, just due to trying to line up with other projects and what Matt thought they could do for, um, keeping it together. I know last winter being very mild helped quite a bit in that. Uh, we've also had an additional wastewater employee, um, in twenty twenty-five since kind of the inception of the document. Uh, the reason that was pushed back is, uh, Matt said that as the plant, plant ages, we know that additional maintenance is needed and that additional employee, employee will be needed, we're just not sure when it is. Um, he thinks we can go at least another year without that. Um, and then there were some protective gear that we talked about for the police department that Tim said is not necessarily needed in twenty-five. And so, um, that stuff does have expiration dates and so you buy it, it suddenly gets on the clock. So, push that back. One thing I did also add in twenty twenty-seven, um, and it's just a thought for certainly future discussions over the next couple of years. Um, but at the end of twenty twenty-seven, I included, uh, something I coined as the Tri-Creek Park and Trail System. Um, my idea being that, uh, setting aside potential, a small amount of funds year over year over year, um, to grow a pot that would then work with property owners who surround, um, three major creeks, Phillips Creek, Sand Creek, and Raven Stream, um, to buy a property and eventually have enough to be able to, um, build a trail system and or manage the creek property a little bit better, um, far into the future as those funds increase. But, um, that would be something that I don't think we would even start potentially working towards until twenty-seven. And would certainly be something for long-term discussions as to, um, building out the park system. So. Are any questions and or additions, subtractions, um, on the visioning documents?
How, um, now, you know, streets are aging out in the other developments. Um, they'll probably just need overlays, you know, and, um, some concrete repairs, a little repairs there. Are we gonna assess property owners for that or is that gonna be a, because you know, I mean, everybody?
I believe there is a street reconstruct assessment. I believe it is much, I believe it's smaller than the full reconstruct. I don't know what it is off the top of my head and that's certainly something that we can discuss as we get into it. Um, but I believe it's currently in our policy that we can or, or could, I, I not can, could.
Because I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, what if an overlay fails in five years? Who's gonna pay for that? You know, we can't go back and assess. And it could happen, you know, some, I'm just saying, you know, and what?
I, I guess maybe that's a question for Matt, he knows better practices of how often milling overlays fail.
Or, you know, we, we, or we have an area that, you know, we've been putting, uh, seal code on that just starts giving us problems like Twelfth did out there that time. Um, and we probably overlaid it sooner than what we had to. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to think ahead there a little bit.
Yeah, so in two thousand nineteen, we did a CIP project that, uh, did the Seventh Street slash thirty-seven. Then we did a bunch of, um, overlaying in that lady's slipper north of, uh, Ace Hardware area.
Yep.
I don't remember the dollar figure they were assessed, but it was much, I, I want to say like four thousand dollars instead of the normal nine thousand street assessment it was. So, yeah, no quote me on that dollar figure, but it was a low amount.
No, and I know your, your thinking has changed about seal coating and stuff, you know? I mean, are we sticking that money, are we still kind of, kind of, still living for it and sticking it to overlays versus seal coatings?
No, that dollar figure just disappeared.
It disappeared.
Took it out of there, I shouldn't say disappeared, it just, it kept the levy lower that, the following year when we took that hundred and fifty thousand dollars out. Um, yeah, I guess I would strongly recommend the council never to seal code again after all the studies we've done. Uh, we do have a seal coating out there that's still failing right now on Eleventh Street Southeast, Eleventh Street Circle Southeast, right off First Avenue, we've just been patching it. Um, so I would tell you, long-term goals, I think this winter we'll have to sit down with Chris and talk about milling overlays and stuff like that. But, uh, we have First Avenue Southeast that we're working with the county right now. That most likely will be done in twenty twenty-six because that is a county road. Um, and then after that, I would say a milling overlay round about something with Tenth Avenue, um, in twenty twenty-six. And then after that, I anticipate milling overlays only for hopefully years to come.
Curb replacement.
Nope, hopefully spot repair of curbs.
That's what I meant.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, so very less invasive.
And, and it would be one of those things, I, I, I think we should seriously consider at least some sort of assessment. And I only say that in that, um, so a lot of this, these underground pipes, I mean, they may last us, they're telling us sixty, seventy, eighty years. That's the hope that none of us ever have to see the pipes in front of our house dug out of the ground. Um, but you're probably gonna mill an overlay every twenty, twenty-five years. And so, um, there, there, there will be a lot of, obviously, there will, there are people that stay in their house thirty, forty, fifty years. Um, there's also a lot of turnover that happens and those assessments get paid off by previous homeowners and, and the like. And so, um, I don't think, I mean, we don't have any coming up this year. And if we end up doing First Avenue Southeast in twenty-six, we won't have any that year. But well, by the time we get to tenth, I don't even know if we, I think there's a very few, when we looked at it, that would even be hit by tenth. But I think it will be a discussion the council has to have as to whether we will be assessing for, um, milling overlays, full milling overlays of streets, basically curb to curb, or, and if we do, how much we end up assessing, assessing for those.
Yeah, I guess that's my point.
And we don't have a lot of contractor roads anymore, do we?
You mean private roads?
Yeah.
We have a couple, don't we?
Hmm, yeah, there's probably, yeah, I mean, a couple are all in Sean's place, um.
Mm-hmm. Well, we took care of a couple of them.
Couple of them. We did, yeah.
We do them to our standard.
Village and part of Gillian, but there's still a part of Gillian and Praha Street and.
Oh, yeah, up by Coburn's.
And you did, you did do milling overly on them too, on the contract?
We need the homeowners association build it to our standard, I can't remember.
They're not built to our standards.
Huh?
Yeah, they're not built to our standards.
Oh, they're not?
No.
That was required.
No, it was not, they had to do, they had to put some money away and they had to do, they had to pay for a full inspections of all sanitary, storm. Um, but yeah, those streets are not built to a city street spec.
Until rebuild.
Well, well, yeah.
Someday.
Um, yeah. Okay.
So I guess, are there any questions on the visioning document before we go forward? No, like I said, kind of use that to kind of build out the, the budget that you guys have and so, if not, we can jump into health and dentals and share information from our last, it's our last meeting.
Go ahead.
Yep, so at, at our last meeting, um, we'd kind of talked about that we didn't have any specifics yet, um, but that we had a fifteen, roughly a fifteen percent cap. I think it was fifteen or fifteen point one, um, and it did end up coming in fourteen point nine if we were to stick with our, uh, existing plan as it is, uh, with a rate cap of nineteen percent to, if we stay in the pool in twenty twenty-six. So, um, in the memo, I did kind of lay out what our rates have been over the last five years. Um, with twenty twenty being our highest increase kind of over the last five years at ten and a half. Um, in twenty-one, we hit zero, we did have a slight increase in twenty-two, a large decrease in twenty-three, and then a, uh, increase of six for, uh, two thousand four, uh, within the packet. Um, I did kind of share some options that were shared with us. Uh, these options were shared by Gallagher, Gallagher because they are similar in plan structure, though there are certainly more options out there. Um, they pretty well range, um, like I said, kind of the same structure with an HSA and increase the deductible and out-of-pocket max, as well as some of them also, uh, include a, um, co-insurance portion after your deductible. So with our current plan for employees, if you're single, um, you basically pay all medical costs up until twenty-two fifty and then the plan picks it up from there. Mine's going really slow and not loading. Uh, I do know options one, two, and three.
That's on the sheet, correct? You're talking about?
Incorrect, thi- thi- this, this is numbers as we get into it, I was trying to, mine just won't load, I guess to look at.
This was separate handed out.
Yeah, this one right here.
Yeah.
All right, yes, so I guess going through those options real fast, um, option one and two increase both the deductible and the out-of-pocket max while including insur- uh, co-insurance. And option three was the most like our current plan, except it just increased the, uh, out-of-pocket max and deductible up to, uh, was it thirty, thirty-three hundred and sixty-six hundred for families? So that would be roughly a one thousand and two thousand dollar increase on the deductible. If we were to move to that option three plan, which I do, I, I recommend in my, um, memo, instead of having a fourteen point nine percent increase in twenty twenty-five, we would see a four point seven percent increase. Um, it would also drop our cap from nineteen percent down to seventeen percent for twenty twenty-six. Now, that being said, I, I do think there are funding options, um, possible to help ease that transition for employees. And that is what, um, the numbers are included on that sheet that I handed out there in front of you. Uh, w- running the numbers on that, um, with the potential increased in out-of-pocket cost for employees, uh, there would be a total savings of about sixty-six thousand dollars, um, to the general fund for switching to option three, which would just be slightly raising the deductibles year over year.
Hey, they all say option three, so.
Okay, so the green one.
The green one.
The green one, the green one is just, the, just, and keeping the HSA the same while raising the deductible, not a pocket max. If we were to, um, switch to option three, and now I'm moving on to the pink one, but double the HSA contribution, that would slightly offset the balance of potential increased costs for employees while still saving the city thirty-four thousand dollars over the current existing plan. Does that make sense? So, um, and then as, as we were just toying with numbers so that you guys would have the options and see the numbers, if we were to, um, increase the HSA contributions, um, by slightly more, that's where that, could argue peach, salmon, however fancy you want to get with it, um, last color is, um, raises them by seven fifty and fifteen hundred. Uh, you would still be seeing a s- savings to the, uh, general fund of twenty thousand dollars and a total save to all funds of thirty-two thousand dollars. And so, as I look at this, um, it is certainly the council's ability to, um, choose with where they want to go. Um, but I would recommend seriously giving thought to the pink plan, um, that would increase the deductibles, not a pocket max for city employees. I know speaking with, um, Gallagher, they said that option three here that we're talking about is probably one of their more popular options they see across local governments. Um, and then it would also, the pink bar does rate, raise the HSA contribution to allow, um, kind of a transition into that higher deductible for city employees. Uh, for your reading, since mine's not loading here, I did also include in that health and dental information kind of a, um, data from where Gallagher had done a survey of surrounding communities on kind of what their premiums and plans are as well as what their HSA contributions, if they have them, are for your guys' information. So. What are you guys' thoughts on health insurance?
You're working off of this and you're not on, on the packet, right?
Right now, my packet is showing up as a white screen, so I am.
You're not doing good. You're doing a little better to me.
I'm working off of packet memory at this point, um, so.
So you don't have page number?
So it'd be page twenty thirty-nine.
Yeah, so I, I'm doing, there, there's a lot of information on the memo, which should be at the very front, but yeah, a lot of the health insurance documents kind of start in the.
In the middle.
In the middle, kind of the color pages that, uh, I see Dwayne and Sean holding.
So, we need to have this, uh, decision by October fifteenth because that's when the enrollment, is that right? Am I reading that right? Renewal decisions?
Yep, Robin, do you remember exactly when we have to have our renewal decision by, I believe it's October, isn't it?
It says October fifteenth on here, right?
Yeah, that may be right then, yeah, that would be like, that would be the, we, we've got time. I know last year we felt crunched and so we pushed hard on them, so we have time.
Okay, but I just want to know what the date is, so as we move forward in this budget process, we can have.
Yep, yeah.
We also have open enrollment on October thirtieth, so while we have time, it's a quick turnaround, the sooner we know, the better.
Yeah.
To prepare employees for open enrollment and submit any changes to the company and like new demographics, which I think that probably outlines without looking at that page, so.
Okay.
So basically, my point is I'd rather not be like, hey, it's the fourteenth, let's.
Oh, no, I don't want that either, but no, I just, I, you, you know, I don't know if you're looking for a specific answer. I mean, this is all great information, but I want to see how it plays out in the bigger picture of everything.
Yep, yeah, I mean, and, and so that's kind of why I, I include, we included, I shouldn't say I, Robin put it together. Um, included kind of the sheet that talked about these savings. So where, where the budget sits currently and kind of talking through these will get us to the preliminary, which is kind of the last thing I believe I've got on the list here. Um, but I, I, I guess I'd love to get feedback from you guys on health insurance plans. Is it, is it certainly something that, no, I've, I've kind of heard from employees, I, we really want to hold our current plan. Um, we, we could be a little bit flexible and maybe move to an option three. Um, we, we like the idea of maybe increasing the HSA to offset, we don't like that idea. Something to give us, something to work with, because I know, um, it, it's nice to continue to talk while we certainly want to look at this in the bigger scope of the whole budget. But staff, we also like guidance so we can continue to try to shape this, um, as the process goes along too.
Well, I'd like to minimize, obviously, the effect to the employee. Um, but yet, we haven't touched this since two thousand eleven, I don't think. I mean, the difference of the, the, the HSA contributions and whatnot, and then when we, and when we did, we offset it by giving a higher percentage of, tied it in with the compensation study and then made up, I can't remember exactly how we did it, but we ended up making up the difference for the employees, even though we raised, we went from ninety-ten to eighty-twenty, I think is where we went. But I think in reality, though, you would find across the board, every company, with health insurance going up, there's just going to be a bigger chunk that I think employees are going to have to accept and have to use.
And, and, and.
And deal with.
And, and that's where I kind of saw this move to the option three, which does increase the deductibles ultimately in the out-of-pocket costs that would get hit by employees. And my thoughts with the then HSA contribution increase, it doesn't make up for the whole gap, but it does make up a little bit of that gap while still allowing the city to save money over the existing health insurance plan.
So I just think moving forward, that's kind of the, personally for me, the mentality that we have to take every year that, you know, as, as those rates go up, it, it can't be a hundred percent employer funded, there always has to be a chunk that.
And, and it's not, I mean, we'd still be operating under the eighty-twenty.
Yeah, right, but this still goes back to, that's why you get a COLA, because this is a set cost that it goes up with everybody, just like gas or just like electricity. So that, you know, so if we're adding to the COLA, why would we necessarily, you know, if we're giving you a COLA cost of living increase, why would we still maintain the same?
But I mean.
I mean, just look at it, again, I'm still trying, don't get me wrong, I, I want to minimize what we can to the employee because that's what I wish my employer would do.
Oh, yeah, and, and I can say ju- just, just so we're, I, I'll say it, COLA isn't just health insurance, I mean, COLA kind of wraps up everything.
Everything, but this would be certainly one thing.
It would certainly be one thing that you would say, yes, it would, but like COLA would help to offset stuff like increased cost of insurance, correct?
Right, right.
Does the, uh, number three on this sheet match up with the source world column number three?
It, yeah, if it says option three on that sheet that I can't get to load, uh, yes. And so, the plan is basically the same as the existing plan with the increased, um, deductible and out-of-pocket. And the o- the only other change then is the, the plan becomes embedded instead of aggregate. So our current plan is aggregate, which you, you learn a lot sitting in these meetings with insurance reps. But aggregate basically means that if, I'll say, I'm on, I'm on a family plan. If, uh, my oldest, well, let's take my number three for example, she was in the emergency room on January first and we hit our out-of-pocket max by two o'clock on January first this year. Um, she hit forty, forty-four fifty or whatever, forty-five hundred dollars, we had to pay that full forty-five hundred dollars because that's the out-of-pocket max for a family. Under an embedded plan, you have a, the single of, this one, single thirty-three, out-of-pocket, uh, family is sixty-six hundred. She is, she is considered a single within the family, so the most that I would have had to pay under this plan, if she went to the emergency room, would be thirty-three hundred. And she could continue to occur for the rest of the year and we wouldn't see another bill. Now, if a second person, they would then start kicking on to add into that family plan, does that make sense?
Sixty-six.
To get to the sixty.
The other thirty-three.
Yeah, the, the other thirty-three, so, um, it, it is the family plan and that I owe for the full sixty-six hundred, but it's embedded in that a single person within my family only has to pay no more than the single rate. Um, that is the other, would be the other big change. And so, it's possible that, um, employ, while the deductible for a family goes up, that an employee with a family plan may actually pay less under this plan.
Mm-hmm.
If nobody else in their family has any events that year. So, that, tho- those are the two big changes that would be under this option three.
And we were looking at a bigger increase a couple of months ago, weren't we?
So, uh, uh, the blue bar, the blue bar at the top would be if we were to keep what we have, our existing plan as it is, um, would increase the, uh, plan amount by fifteen point one percent. We would see a cost increase. Moving to the option three, we would see a four point seven percent increase over twenty twenty-four.
Okay, but, but less.
Yeah, so, so, so the green one would be if we keep the HSA contributions the same, we'd see a four point seven percent increase in health insurance costs over twenty twenty-four. The pink one and the, uh, salmon color, peach, whatever we're gonna call it, uh, would be what the savings would be to the general fund if we were to increase the HSA contribution in addition to that over the current plan in blue.
So the first one.
It's almost double, really.
What's that?
You mean, we, we almost reduced it fifty percent. I mean, from, if we kept the HSA contribution at five hundred and a thousand, our total savings is sixty-four four?
Six, sixty-four four, yes.
And then, the other one is thirty-four seven.
Yeah, so, so, so it would cost the general fund about thirty thousand dollars if we were to increase the contribution, um, still saving thirty-four thousand dollars from the existing plan.
Right, okay.
Now, I got it.
All right.
Are there questions or maybe direction on what we see here, try to piece this together a little bit?
Just so I understand, the, the number three source will plan, and is that after the deductible is met, is it, it's not an eighty-twenty or ninety-ten, it's a hundred percent?
Correct, one and two would have like an eighty-twenty split and you'd hit the deductible and then you'd have that eighty-twenty split up to the out-of-pocket max. For the number three plan, it matches what our current plan is, is once you hit that deductible, the deductible is also your out-of-pocket max, so you're just done.
All right, so you're saying the.
So, so, so it says.
Let's go with color coding so we can keep it straight.
Okay.
Green, it doesn't matter, green would be the one we got right now.
Blue is what we have right now.
Blue's the one we got right now.
The other colors don't align with the page that says twenty twenty-five medical renewal alternatives. Those other options aren't listed on the colored sheet, we only put option three from page forty-two.
Hmm, because they, I'll say, option three.
They're, they're all option three with varying degrees of HSA contribution.
Got you, that's about all that's changed and the deductible.
Because Rick, the other ones had a copay and the deductibles, so now I'm looking at just the blue and white sheet, page forty-two of your packet.
Mm-hmm.
Those had different deductible amounts, um, the twenty percent copay. So, we just compared on the colored, separate handout, sorry Josh, I'm stepping in first. Um, we just compared on the separate handout, um, number three.
But just so I know, how, why, why did you recommend number three over number two or the renewal of number one?
Yep, so my recommendation of number three was that, um, it has taken the plan that we're on and just adjusted it and obviously increased the out-of-pocket costs for employees, um, but it's kept our insurance as similar to what we have now, um.
Is it a hundred percent plan?
Yeah, so, yeah, i- 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 it's basically very similar to the plan now, we've just adjusted it, we'll save for inflation. We've, we've, as Sean said, like, health costs have gone up and so it adjusts our, our current plan that employees have gotten used to operating under. I, I, I'm not saying that they'd be opposed to the co-insurance, but it's also entire, like, it's an, it's a new concept that they'd say, well, I hit my deductible, not like, why am I still having to pay? And so, i- it was an attempt to try to bridge that.
The HSA contribution, the insurance company doesn't give a frog's fat ass about that, that.
Correct.
The, the HSA is, that just helps you offset the thirty-three hundred and the sixty-six hundred.
Correct.
Right, so that's just money that the employer is putting in to their HSA that they can use against the higher deductible.
Correct.
I don't have a lot to compare against, but the existing plan we currently had last year is pretty competitive, actually, compared to the ones I'm familiar with.
If, if you look at the stuff that Gallagher put out, it is a highly, yeah, you're, it's a highly competitive plan, I think you say. I know that the city was on the low, we'll say on the lower side of how much money it was giving for HSA contributions, but I think the plan itself was probably one of the more competitive plans.
In my plan, that I got from school was similar to this, but was a eighty-twenty after deductible. I'm just surprised at the hundred percent, I, I don't see that as often.
Well, there is plans that don't pay, they do pay eighty-twenty.
Right, right.
We don't have that option here listed, but.
They, it is, it's.
And that saving, that might even.
Well, it is, it is, it is in there, option one and option two, uh, and, and it's not on this funding sheet.
It's on the.
It, it, it's on that sheet that showed the various options that they handed out, um, option one and two were eighty-twenty plans.
Well, I think it's good information, it's a good starting point, I, I appreciate the opportunity to look at.
Yep, and so I'll let you guys know, the current budget is based off of our current plan. And so the, the, the budget before you is based off of the blue plan.
Off the blue plan.
Off the blue.
That's good to know.
Um, now going into the dental, we did also receive dental rates. Um, I don't have an exact recommendation at this point, though, um, being that we received rates of, from four different companies, Delta Dental, who we currently have, um, Health Partners, and then MetLife and Guardian. So, when it came in, Delta Dental came in with our, basically keeping. So when it came in, Delta Dental came in with our, basically keeping our current plan with an eight percent increase. Uh, MetLife, uh, Guardian and Health Partners all proposed a ten percent plus decrease for twenty twenty-five. Um, and Gar- uh, Guardian went as far as to give us no rate increase for twenty twenty-six. Health Partners, in addition to being a twelve percent decre- decrease, also has a couple of various programs that the others don't. Um, including uh various things for minors and or seniors, I believe. Uh, potentially on the plan that allows them free dental care. That aside, the reason I don't have a recommendation right now is only because I asked Gallagher to do a check to make sure that. These people actually have dentists that they cover in New Prague, it wouldn't do us any good to say, let's switch to MetLife Dental and the closest dentist is twenty-five miles away. Um, so right now, our budget is set up as the eight percent increase of Delta Dental. Um, just until we can actually get that information, so I'm gonna make the wild assumption. That we're gonna go with one of the other three that give us a ten percent decrease on our rate, but I don't wanna say which one or make that formal recommendation. Until we actually have the number in front of us and we know where people can go to the dentist.
So, uh, okay, and I'm uh I'm just confused cuz I'm trying to think of whatever one that I was used to, but um. I mean, Delta Dental, you can go, yeah, almost anywhere.
They seem to be able to.
Yeah, but I do know that in the past I've had dentists when my insurance has changed in the private sector, that I've gone to the dentist. And they've said, oh, yeah, well, we can fill, we'll fill out the paperwork to become that.
Yep.
MetLife carrier.
Yeah.
Or whatever, and then I've even run into, uh, cuz I like to keep my dentist.
Yep.
They said, well, we don't, we're, w- we'll go with MetLife, let's say, but we're going to um.
Charge.
We're not necessarily gonna go with every one of their prices, so there might be, so sometimes I'll get a bill for forty dollars or whatever, except four hundred, but, okay.
Yeah, so.
Whereas Delta Dental would have paid the whole thing.
Yeah, so I, like I said, I, we we've got still time like the health insurance on that one, but just to let you guys know. We may not end up staying with Delta Dental, I just wanna make sure we have carrier information before we make that decision, so that way our employees know, hey. You can keep the, it's all the same dentist in town, or hey, this dentist you can, but everyone else you can, or that sort of thing, so. Um, but our current budget as for you has the eight percent increase in it for Delta.
Can I just clarify, Josh, we have a ten percent increase in the budget for dental?
Be coming down, I guess.
And the colorful sheet includes a twelve percent decrease because of the three other than Delta Dental. The other three would be a minimum of a twelve percent decrease, so the colorful sh- sheet includes a twelve percent decrease. As we feel that would be the minimum we would see if we went with one of the other carriers.
So blue is twelve percent?
Blue is a ten percent dental increase.
Yeah, yeah, bu- blue would, blue would be the fifteen percent health increase and a ten percent dental increase.
And I like my dentist too, but if, but he's not covered, he's not covered, you know, I mean, I hope the employees understand that too, I mean, if we're looking at budget. You know, it's not like.
I mean, I.
Thing I was involved with, the employer came to me and said.
Yeah, I mean, and 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 I think my hope is with three of them, one of them at least covers the network fairly well, that would be my hope.
I mean, I related to that with the county, all of a sudden, went to a doctor all my life and then. Got onto county insurance and had to switch doctors, and that I think is worse than switching dentists.
The carrier is Sourcewell, that's the name of the health insurance company?
So our health insurance is under Health Partners right now, which is, like, so Sourcewell is the group that we're a part of.
Okay, okay.
Sourcewell is the name of the group, but but it's not the carrier for the insurance, our current carrier is Health Partners, but it's switching to Blue Cross.
So uh, Health Partners or Sourcewell, whoever, is the contract uh is Mayo in mar- in uh network?
Correct, yeah, so for our, for our current Health Partners plan, Mayo's in network, and when we switch to Blue Cross, I, as far as I'm aware, our network really isn't changing.
I'm supportive of glowing pink, but I would, the sooner you make the decision, the better in my mind, because these do take time.
Oh, for sure, yes.
So I I would really recommend you to decide.
And and it's entirely something, I I would say maybe at our next meeting, cuz we will be setting our preliminary levy, we can also have our health.
You have to give the employees so many days' notice too, I think. I'm not sure, are you switching calendar year?
Yeah, so we switch January one.
So you, I think you have to let them know by whatever, they have to commit by a certain time.
I think it's at October fifteenth in here, right?
I'm not sure. Employees don't have to.
Enrollment opens at October thirtieth. And it'll probably be open for three weeks or something, or two weeks.
You do something like that, I guess, were there any health other insurance questions at this point? Okay, CIP is the next one, number three on here, um, wi- with the directive to try to get the initial. Um, levy increase down, um, we did take a look at stuff, um, just some highlights, some of the things that ended up either. Basically getting delayed in the CIP.
Are you going to page fifty-three then?
Page are we on now?
I believe so.
As someone who's not working. Packet?
I think it is, just keep going.
CIP, what they have with pages.
No, we're on page four of this.
Yeah, or here.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, so I'm working off the narrative right there, I think.
On page four and.
He's talking about the supporting document.
Fifty-three for the attachment.
Yeah, fifty-three, page attachment, attachment on page fifty-three. So some of the things that got reduced and or pushed back on the CIP um was uh the community development department desks, chairs. Um, privacy panels got reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five thousand.
Could I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Um, on the previous uh budget that was with the CIP, it was listed as forty thousand.
It was listed as forty, so what happened there is it was originally listed as forty, and before you guys ever saw it, I reduced it to thirty-five and then did not.
But I saw it.
Well. Did not do all my cross-reference checks and the CIP one didn't, well, where it got changed in the budget and in the packet, it didn't get changed on the CIP. So the CIP now has been cross-referenced over and back with everything, so the numbers should line up, that's why it went, you saw this.
At the end of the last year, the CIP showed that you were gonna uh spend ten thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, correct, yes, yes, that was, that was ten thousand dollars.
That's for this year.
For for this year, it was, that was attempting to.
No, it was ten thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-five, I think.
I know, I know it's in, I thought it was for twenty twenty-four, cuz it was in the budget for twenty twenty-four, um, as we were trying to take a smaller bite out of the apple.
Instead of doing it all in the. Carpet and paint and uh window coverings that are all thirty years old.
Okay, I can look again, but I thought it was ten thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-five for building inspection furniture, da 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 da. But I can double check it, so I just thought you were doing something more.
It it it's it's adding, it it's adding on top of that ten thousand.
Okay.
What, who's the community development department?
That's basically my department.
That's, that's Ken.
Whole office for Deb and Brian and Scott and.
Oh, all those guys, okay, alright, okay.
Wants to watch the Twins game, so I need it.
Uh, of note, a lot of that actually could be paid right out of the building inspection fees that they collect, I know we've had some very good years. Um, and so a lot of that's revenue that's already come into the city, just kind of going back into that department.
Call Ted Mondi, I'd be a good deal on him to get more THC days and stuff. Cigarette violation.
Remember that's what he got caught doing with.
Uh, an- another one, kind of the second dot there I have, uh, if you're reading through the memo, um, like Sean is. Uh, talked to Steve and Steve said we could delay the purchasing of radios for the department. Um, so that is reducing the fire department radios from twenty-five thousand down to zero for twenty twenty-four. We also, um, kind of after the conversation, um, Matt had us remove the hundred thousand dollars from the government facilities. That we ti- kinda talked about just putting away money year over year. Removing that at least for twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five, um, to help kind of bring that levy down. And then um reducing uh community development is also working with a depart- uh vehicle. That you can hear from about eighteen miles away as it's racing up on you to check out your inspection um violations, and so. We're, a new vehicle has been costing the city usually about thirty-five thousand dollars, so that's what we had in there last time, we did reduce that down to twenty. Thinking we could find a good vehicle that's a few years old, that we could certainly come in under the twenty grand, I know. As someone that's been looking for a vehicle, you can certainly find a three or four-year-old car with about thirty thousand miles on it. For around that twenty or less than twenty thousand dollars, so.
What, I thought we were just using like old police cars.
That's, I was gonna say, Tim, don't catch them.
But I I know that uh wastewater department also has a vehicle that I think you can hear from eighteen miles away. And we only have so many police cars that we'd be running through in a given year, and so. Either wastewater or community development may get one, and then the other department may have.
How many miles would those, let's say those concurrent cars have on them, I mean, are they two hundred thousand, or should we just fix them for a few thousand dollars?
I bu- I believe don't, yeah. I I guess I, Matt could probably speak better for the wastewater car, I know the community development car was a, the police investigations car. Before community development had it, and I honestly, it feels like it basically, the check engine light's coming on about every two weeks. And so you're.
I think the bigger issue with that is the frame is literally rusting apart on it.
Well, well, that's.
The exhaust is rusted off.
Oh, okay, alright, that's enough, okay.
So, yeah, I mean, we we certainly do try to fix these as far as we can get them, because many times it does make more sense, and we are lucky enough. That Matt's been able to find guys that have skills across trades of, a lot of public works departments don't have the amount of skills ours has, so. That, that is what is currently listed in the CIP going forward. I guess, are there any direct CIP questions before we get into the preliminary levy?
Well, I, the fire department is okay, Steve, for no radios, I mean.
We just have to push them out a year.
I know, but.
Did uh eight last year and we're gonna do another eight this year and another eight the following year and another eight the following year till they're all replaced and just put it down here.
Yeah.
You're you're doing some of them, right, the rural?
The rural splits the cost, so the total purchase for the radios would be fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand.
Sure, you're gonna do the part that the rural is paying for this next year?
Um, we could, I suppose, essentially, cuz they would still pay for it.
Yeah, that's what it sa- shows anyway.
Does it?
Well, and and that's cuz we haven't had a chance to talk to the rural yet, and so they've always matched the, the, and so that's just there because that's more of an FYI to show that the rural.
Yeah, the agreement was that when it was fifty fifty, so I don't know if they're gonna.
Push, we would push over just back a year.
I know, I'm just thinking, I, you know, we got.
I sent a a grant thing, I don't know if.
You did.
For a grant, we're just not sure if we got it yet.
We we.
But there was another one that I sent, uh, from Taylor Company and.
Yes.
I don't know if we're doing it or not, but.
I I know we've been applying to a number of grants, that's probably just about all Kira seems to do anymore is apply for money for us. Um, and I feel like I checked with her and we either have applied for it or it was on her list of things to apply for. I know that, yeah, like, like Steve said, we have, we have applied for a grant that would basically have covered the cost of all of the radios, correct, Steve?
Uh, no, cuz the grant isn't very big, so it was just covered for, I believe, this year's.
Oh, okay.
Didn't we have any more of that uh ARPA money left over or?
Uh, we did, and the ARPA money uh is now being recommended to be used. Within the budget on a, uh, and I was gonna get to that in the preliminary levy discussion, um, we are. I gotta go back, scroll down the sheet, before we jump into the ARPA, do we have any other CIP direct questions?
Well, I I just wanna voice my uh my issue with the fire department radios, I mean, it's hard to, you see cities all over. That can't fill their volunteer fire department, and I think we've been really good because we've always met all their needs. And now we're scrambling to find, now we gotta pull twenty-five grand out from underneath them and. Um, I just have an, I have an issue with that, I don't uh. Uh, and let alone, I, and I don't understand enough about the radios, but maybe that's a uh a safety issue too for those guys. You know, that if they don't have working.
I could take that one, John, this is something that I brought to their table, that this is an area we could push off a year. We got, we did have failing radios, we still have failing radios, we got the eight last year, which uh fix that. I I do feel we could push this off a year and we'd be fine.
Okay, what about the the thirty other guys that you?
They're on board with it.
They are? We're not the bad guys?
No.
Okay.
I'm the bad guy.
So if I go to the fish fry, I'm not gonna get surrounded by fifteen of them and.
No, they won't pull the pipe bolt out on you yet.
Okay, alright, not to muddy the water, but could you just give a a quick um. Um, answer or re- what what is that public safety that we got last year, that three hundred some thousand that's sitting there at the end of the year?
Yep, so that public safety aid, yeah, that public safety aid, if you remember, part of it went to paying the SRO salary to offset the difference that we were getting.
For this two thousand twenty-four?
For twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
We also had a few other items on there, I can't remember what they are off the top of my head.
So wasn't it three hundred fifty-nine thousand?
But I I think it got us down to roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay.
When we then had the fire tank issue, we basically said, okay, we need money right now, so let's use that public safety money.
Okay.
Get our air to air packs replaced, and then um hopefully through some sort of settlement or whatnot. We will then be able to replenish and use that money for stuff like this, but.
Of the three hundred fifty-nine thousand at the end of last year, we're down to like uh seventy-five thousand?
We're probably down to zero, th- th- those air packs were over a two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
That was the number that was sticking in my head too, Bruce.
Because, yes, I think initially this twenty-five thousand was going to go towards, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we have twenty-five thousand of that allocated. For radios.
This is the last year's, the the radios we currently got came out of that fund.
Yeah.
Alright.
So then I guess rolling into the levy discussion.
Page number five on the memo, I don't know where it is on the.
Five on the memo, I don't know if there's a direct page number of attachments other than various.
The whole budget.
Budget, that regular attachment, so um the levy increase that we brought you last week or here two weeks ago was fifteen point seven five percent. Um, kind of talked about some of the reasons why it was tighter, the general direction I got from the councils, you guys wanted to see that closer to ten percent if we could. So we did go back to the drawing board, um, ultimately, the decrease that's showing up in your packet right now would be an eleven point two four percent increase. Over twenty twenty-four. Um, some of the changes that were made to get there include uh removing a hundred thousand dollars from government buildings to go for. Uh, future maintenance and or ren- renovations. Uh, a decrease to the part-time fire department wages of five thousand dollars down to forty-five thousand, um, with this budget. Chief was initially um planning on asking for a training pay increase from six fifty to fourteen. Um, but is now proposing an increase to eleven dollars per hour, um, as well as uh increasing the on-call pay. From thirteen dollars to fourteen dollars per hour. We would also be delaying the purchase of radios in the fire department, um, which would, as we talked about, remove twenty-five thousand dollars. We would be reducing office equipment purchases for the community development department by ten thousand dollars. We would be, we did increase the revenue slightly on the community development permit. By ten thousand dollars, this is a very conservative guess, cuz I hate to increase something that we're really reliant on, but we. Year over year over year, continue to beat our current estimates, and so I do think we are safe adding ten thousand dollars to that revenue source. And then I increased the use of fund balance by sixty-seven thousand dollars, that is the ARP- remaining ARPA fu- fund you're talking about. Um, basically with that, that would offset a couple mowers or something like that on the CIP. Um, my idea with that, since we do have to have it allocated, spent or allocated by the end of twenty twenty-four. Would be that, assuming that is the route we go, I would say come December, we then order the mowers, which puts that money under officially. Allocated, we would then pay upon receipt in the new year in twenty-five, whenever that would formally hit the budget, so that would work for those. Um, all of these adjustments did allow us to reduce the property levy down to four million two hundred ninety-one seven fifteen. Which would see a general fund increase of four, little under fourteen and a half, but looks at a total increase of eleven point two four. I guess with this, um, and knowing that, as we talked about, there's even health insurance stuff that's gonna potentially bring this down. I would recommend, I guess at this point, setting the preliminary levy at thirteen percent increase. Um, which is higher than where it currently stands, but it does allow that slight wiggle room in case something should come up. Um, that we need to adjust for later in the year, but would, like I said, hopefully we would be coming in. Um, lower than the eleven as is currently shown in the budget.
How, number five, how is that gonna help us?
Uh, number five is not affected by the levy, number five, the golf management contract, um, i- is funded through the golf board. And so that, um, it's on there because we certainly um wanna talk about that sooner than later. But I'm talking about it after the levy, since it doesn't affect the levy.
What's the drop dead day that we have to set the preliminary levy?
The end of September, the idea would be that at our next meeting, usually the second meeting in September is when we set it, otherwise you're calling a special meeting. To set that preliminary levy.
Which, to be honest with you, I'd like to have budget meetings just specific to budget, instead of tying them in at nine fifteen, because.
And, and this one got late, I mean, the last one, it worked well, I think we had a half-hour meeting and then we met for about forty-five minutes to an hour. This one, the public hearing.
Right.
Jumped in the way, but I know it is also difficult sometimes for people with all the meetings that we have to be able to make, set aside another meeting. And so by having them after the meeting, the hope would be that they take no more than an hour, which we are roughly around an hour at this point. And that you're not having to, to satisfy another time where everybody can get together.
I, I'm with Sean on that one, I'd rather sit down and have a workshop, get the budget done. I'm going page two, page ninety-five, page forty-seven, what man? Workshop.
Three retired people for sure, on the council with Maggie now, so, they got plenty of time.
I prefer it this way, just to be counter.
Oh, okay.
Because having all the meetings and retired people doesn't mean you don't do anything.
I know, I was joking a little bit, but.
But, yeah.
I just, I just feel better when I can concentrate on the budget as we start to get into this and start digging at it. From five to seven or something specific to the budget, not with me trying to remember to ask about. These questions and that questions and listening to them and making sure their answers get answered. And I, it, just personally, I, I mean, I, I understand your, your take on it too, Bruce, and it's not like I like to have more meetings, but, um.
Can do both ways, I guess.
Yep.
So, maybe we could alternate or something, I don't.
Well, I appreciate as far as the levy part of it, that you, you've worked and cut it down to eleven point two. I, I still would rather see a ten number.
And, and like I said, I, I think, I think we'll get there once the health insurance stuff gets ironed out.
Okay.
Because like I said, these, these numbers include the, the ten percent increase for dental and the fifteen percent increase for health insurance.
Even if you average ten for the last, divided by two, two, it's still the biggest percentage increases. In my memory that we would have had, in your prime.
Oh, most certainly.
So, I, I, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering where you guys sit with the preliminary thirteen, that way, um, since.
Yeah.
I, ideally, I would say we'd set that preliminary levy at our next meeting, and then we'd go from there, we'd get that requirement out of the way.
I support that.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's pre- preliminary, I. You know, we can set it at whatever. I mean, it's just, yeah, we have to have wiggle room.
Do you know, is there a homestead exemption this year that wasn't last year?
I'm not where. I, I, I know there's always talk every year about adjusting where the homestead exemption, exemption lands, I don't know if it actually got anywhere.
Because I, I have one in my projected two thousand twenty-five.
That you hadn't.
And I didn't have it last year.
And, a- and, and maybe, because I said, I know they were talking about it in legislature this past spring, and so maybe something with that went through, like.
There is something that, that changes there.
Well, it would make sense, when you look at the graph that Scott County gave you, why, if your property doesn't go up. It only goes up three percent, I think, based on this levy increase. And that would be because your market, taxable market value on your house went down because of the, is deducted. So that would explain that if that's what happened.
Did you get your things already?
It was what we get with our property taxes and.
I see, yeah, usually when they send it out, they send out a preliminary twenty-five too.
Yeah, I guess I didn't look at that too close, okay. And I know there was something, I got something in the mail or, or saw something about. What you just said.
You got Scott County's already?
No, no, this is.
What you get with your property.
Oh, 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 okay, I thought you got some, okay.
Get in June or something, or.
You know, the preliminary levy though, too, Josh, you had on here was that. Those increases due for a few reasons, with large reason being that the city had a zero percent increase in twenty twenty-four, it wasn't zero, it was.
No, it was.
We just copied.
Which, which.
The year before, which was four point two four percent.
No, no, we copied the total levy, the levy was at four million eight hundred and change. That's what, we didn't copy four point two percent, we copied four. Million eight hundred and change, and so we had a true zero percent increase.
Okay.
For twenty-three into twenty-four.
Yep.
And which, given that property values went up even, should have given us more money on top of it, really, right?
Which, yeah, I mean, so.
Which we didn't.
Be- because of that, I think, and obviously not everybody, but I would, like, myself personally, my property taxes went down for the city in twenty twenty-four. Due to the zero dollar increase, because commercial valuation saw a large hit.
Yes.
And residential's either pretty well stayed, obviously some peoples went up, but pretty well stayed flat. So, I would guess the majority of residences across the city saw a decrease in city tax dollars in twenty-four.
They didn't.
Now, maybe for school district and counties, yours might have gone up, which might have shifted stuff, but.
My assessment.
Well, that, that's the government's fault, you're gonna take that up with your local councilman about assessments.
Anyway.
Okay, so, so if I'm getting that correctly, I will bring back a resolution for thirteen percent preliminary at the next meeting. And if you guys are alright with it, we'll certainly bring back the health insurance discussion to have again at the next meeting.
Yes, because we should have more information, or we should be.
Hopefully we'll have, hopefully we'll have the dental stuff nailed down, and if you guys have any other health insurance questions that come up before then, please let me know so we can try to answer those. And if we can get, like Bruce and Robin said, the sooner we can get that answered, I think the, the cleaner it is for everybody.
Yep, yep.
So, when do we foresee the next budget meeting, whether it's after that meeting or whether.
So the next planned budget meeting would be for the, after the first meeting in October. Unless the council wants to meet again before that, or wants to go on a different night. But, yeah, when, when we initially put out the schedule. Yeah, the, the planned schedule, it was to basically piggyback on the first meeting of every month, uh, which would have given us five total budget meetings.
Does that give Robin enough time if we gotta have that information in by the fourteenth, if we're, now we're within a week?
Well, that's a good point, too.
Well, and, and that's why I said by bringing it up at the next meeting, the next true city council meeting, which will be September sixteenth. That would allow discussion there, um, and potentially having it a month early, or we could say, hey, let's get together to talk about this again. In a week or something like that. Yes, uh, just for you guys' information, uh, we do have police union stuff, so I did wanna talk about that after the next meeting as well.
Also, there'll be a closed meeting also, okay.
Really? Already?
We only did a one-year contract with them.
Was it? Oh.
Yeah. We, we couldn't agree on terms, if you remember, or the length of the contract.
I feel we're pretty along, far along with the budget, is there any particular concerns you have, Sean, with, with the budget? Because we've covered quite a bit of things.
Um, well, I mean, obviously the insurance, I wanna see what the, 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 the insurance, when that finally comes in, wears it at. Um, I'm not real comfortable with the ten percent, but I think I'm already outvoted on it, because based on what I read in the paper. You and Wayne and Rick are okay with it, I know Maggie wasn't, but, um, according to the paper, but other than that. You know, I still want to have time to digest it and look at it and see if there's. Things we can skinny down, things we can maybe not do or put off, I mean.
No, I agree with you there too, I mean, we gotta start someplace.
No specifics, though, I don't have anything specific.
Speaking for insurance, is there other information you'd like, because, like I said, the dental one, obviously, I'd like to get their carriers. But is there more specific health insurance stuff that you'd like to see?
I don't, not necessarily, because I, I guess what I'm curious about is, like you said, you guys put in high amounts, and we're expecting. Change there, so if it's actually, you know, ten percent less, or if we go with Delta Dental and it's negative, or it's twelve point six percent.
Yep, yeah.
Does that mean to the overall budget?
Yes, yes, yeah, so looking at this colored sheet, um, a- again, if you're making real general assumptions, you can assume fifty thousand dollars equals one percent.
Yeah.
And I think it's actually almost spot on this year. So, i- if you were to go with the, the green option, which would be to change, keep the HSA contribution where it's at. While switching to this other plan, you'd see a decrease of sixty-four thousand dollars, assume, wi- with the dental change worked in there. So that would be roughly one and a third percent that that would bring you down off of the eleven two four, so.
Okay.
That's a smidge under ten, um, your thirty, thirty-four thousand dollars, you're looking at more point six, six percent down. So then you're looking at roughly ten point six or something like that percent. If you were to go with the slightly raised contribution with the change in health insurance plan. And so, we certainly have those numbers, and I mean, I can shoot those percentages out to you guys if you wanna look at that percentage.
Well, and I'll be honest too, I'm kinda waiting to get my second half of my tax statement too, so I can look at, I could probably find the one I got in April. But we get another one in September here, right?
Yeah, I, I believe it comes in like November, if I remember right. But at the same time, Sean, i- if you'd like your tax statement, we can, all that information's available at the, on the county website.
I just wanna see how much my home value in the area is, or maybe you know what that is.
Well, that's what I mean, I can pull your tax statement for you and email it to you if you'd like me to.
Okay.
It, it's, it's pretty easy to get ahold of.
Okay, or just give me the website, I can do it to it.
Yeah, I, 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 I can shoot you the website, yeah, you can go look up your information, or if you wanna get real nosy on Chuck and see what he pays for taxes, you can certainly do that too.
All public.
Yeah, I, I can, I can get that information to you.
And the reason I wanna do.
He takes a lot of notes, I'm sure he's already writing down, and I'm gonna send it to you when I forget.
Well, I'm just curious, because if, let's say the houses went up six percent over, as an average in New Craig or whatever, obviously. The ten percent that I'm paying is included, that six percent is off that value of that house, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so, I, I did include in your packets and, um, you can look at, uh, the, uh. The summary of assessment data, it's kind of, it's actually, I think, the very last thing in the budget portion of your packet. You can kind of look at where the general increases for residential.
Oh, you know what?
For, uh, commercial, look at it, very, very end there. So, yeah, i- if that's, if you guys are okay with thirteen for just the prelim, I'll certainly bring that back. So now, my final question is, before we all run away, is do you wanna talk golf manager contract stuff tonight? I know you guys had mentioned that you wanted to see it early, and so I had the golf board look at it in August, so that we could look at it first thing in September this year. So that way, if we wanna go back and forth on it, certainly, we certainly have that ability to at this point.
It really has no effect on the levy, you said, so I mean.
Uh, which is kind of why I had it after the preliminary levy discussion, because, yeah, it wasn't, it's not vital to get done by the end of the month here.
See, I thought it was.
Wanted to see it early, which is why.
Yeah.
Had it come in.
Yeah, no, I think there's room there, uh.
My, my comment, I think, was that I'd like to see the budget earlier.
And, and, yep, and, and I, I would hope that we will have that here at the beginning of October. I, I told Kurt I'd like to have the golf board look at that in September, so that way we can see that early October.
Yeah. Because that's, that's another thing, like with their CIP, it seems always not match up with.
And hopefully we've got that taken care of.
Okay. Anything else?
So, we're, ju- just make sure we're not gonna talk golf management contract tonight?
I.
Okay.
Do we got copies of it in here?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that should be the very last thing in your packet.
Okay.
It wasn't, it was just a summary, right, or did you have the actual contract written up?
I, I believe the actual one is in there.
Oh.
And, and it's, yeah, it's, it's. He just basically changed.
Yeah, I did see that, okay.
Yeah, the only change would be over year was the amount, and I believe a roughly a four point seven percent increase or something like that. Yeah.
Okay, I wanna, I didn't read it, I'll, I'll be real honest on that one, I just was looking at all the other stuff. So.
Okay, we can certainly discuss that next time, and we're along with the whole budget.
Okay, so with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Five oh five, Doherty.
We found it.
Oh, okay.
Did it go up in value or?
For twenty, well, it doesn't have twenty-five estimate on, I don't know if La Sure sends out a twenty-five estimate.
I have to.
I thought they had to.
Oh, apparently they don't put them online. They, they, they put the actual tax statement, they don't put the estimate for twenty-five online, so you can see your bill.
Well, it's part of the old farm.
Here, so this is what the actual bill is.
Kalupski, come on.
I live on.
So usually it says, you know.
Doherty must be.
Doherty's on the south side, um, it's over there, I think it's, um.
Yeah, so for, yeah, it looks like it went up about ten thousand dollars for this year, for this year.
Like by Jillian Street?
I do think they send one out in like tunes, but they don't put it online.
They do, because I know I got one from the.
It was horizontal from.
I might have one.
It does go.
Is it a street?
Yeah, it's a street.
Or is it Doherty Avenue?
Six and ten, I don't know.
Oh, there it is.